Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board. Today is June 11th. Welcome here. Abby, is there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no.
Okay. No changes to the agenda, so going in order from the agenda, item number one, 80 Wilson Way, EIDR, public hearing request for facade and entry alterations at existing commercial building. Would the applicant please come to the podium and present themselves?
Hi, my name is Michael Grill. I'm manager of Fairlane Westwood LLC, and we've owned 80 Wilson Way since 2010. Today, just wanted to describe the current situation at the property and describe what we're trying to do. We had a tenant at the property since we've owned the building since 2010, KLA TenCor. They moved out in October of 2018, and we've been marketing the building for well over a year now. And we're marketing to different tenants that would use the high-production type facility that we have there. We have a lot of clean rooms, the building's entirely air-conditioned, and we've been marketing the property to multi-tenant users, dividing the building up into as many as four different configurations, or marketing it for one tenant. As we've proceeded with the marketing since the tenant moved out, we've been planning for improvements to the property. We've added 3,000 amps of power in the last couple of months with Eversource, and now the brokers that are marketing the property are suggesting that we spruce the building up a little bit. It's a 1974 building. Wanted to also introduce Connor Nagel, who's with VHB. He'll be talking in a moment. And I also just want to mention that Mike Terry is here. He won't be presenting, but just wanted to -- you obviously know Mike, but I just wanted to acknowledge that he is a member of our team. So these facade improvements are just to spice up the building. Connor will show the current facade if you're not familiar with it. It looks like it's from 1974, because it is from 1974, and that wasn't exactly a high architectural style era. What we're attempting to do is put a little jazz into the property. So I'm going to turn this over to Connor right now, but I'll be here, obviously, to answer questions that you might have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Director Connor Nagel of VHB, site civil engineer. Take this. As Michael said, the intent is simply to improve the facade to attract potential tenants to the site. This is the site here, 80 Wilson Way, just south of East Street. The facade is here on the eastern side, southeastern face of the building. The site here just shows a blow-up. It's approximately 140 square feet of canopy over the door that sticks out from the building, approximately three feet. What we're proposing, the intent, obviously, is the architectural improvement. We're proposing a dry well here to capture the additional runoff that is the 140 square feet of the canopy. I get insignificant in the scheme of the site, but that is the proposed improvement The improvement itself is an architectural rendering there that shows the existing entrance, a very simple canopy over the door compared with something more modern, more attractive that may entice tenants in. That's the extent of the proposal at this time. Abby had requested that we discuss the stormwater for the roof, so we have taken a look at that, at the treatment of an inch of runoff over the roof area in addition to what we're doing at the front door. In the time since this comment came up, we haven't had the opportunity to do test pits here, to fully engineer this, but to give you a sense of the scale of that, we put it through our HydroCAD model and came up with the volume that would be required to infiltrate the roof system, the inch over the roof. It would require approximately 375 storm tech units. The roof system is internally plumbed and discharges at one location here, so we could potentially plumb that to a system like this and then discharge to the ditch in front of the site as it currently does. As I said, we have not had a chance at this point to engineer that any further than the concept that is there in front of you. That's all I have at this point. I'd be happy to entertain any questions on any of that.
Is this the end of your presentation, or is there anybody else? No, okay. And Abby, were there any comments from the staff that you'd like to share?
No additional comments. Myself and Phil had recommended recharging the one inch of the stormwater, so the applicant did provide the concept plan yesterday, so Phil did look that over, and he would recommend conditioning that the final, fully-designed plans be provided to him to review in advance of the construction, and then also performing those soil test pits in advance.
And then when you say the -- his full plan, so that is the evaluation of, is it just the runoff that he's going to be looking at, or will he look at -- I heard there's a lighting plan that is pending also, or?
No, they have requests -- they're requesting a waiver from the exterior lighting plan for right now. So I think the lights that are on the building right now, they're not proposing to change, but they haven't provided an updated exterior lighting plan.
Okay.
So what Phil would be looking for would be fully-designed plans of what they're showing in their concept plan to capture the roof runoff, so provide the full details of capturing that water and directing it into that storm tech system.
Essentially the engineering design to back this up.
Okay. Because I did see some mention of the lighting plan, so what is the idea behind that?
So that's, I mean, one of your requirements for the site plan review is for applicants to provide an exterior lighting plan. So there's existing lights on the building that they're not proposing changing, so they're requesting a waiver from you.
We've requested the waivers. The application has no site improvement associated with it. It is simply, as Michael said, to spruce up the face of the building. So there's no site improvement, no lighting improvement proposed at this time. Should tenants want improvements down the road, that may be something we need to look at. But at this time, we've requested a waiver for the site lighting. Similarly, a waiver for traffic report, as there is no improvement to the site.
Okay. So we're to open it up to the board, so if anybody else -- so Billy, you'd like to speak?
This is a flat roof.
Yes.
So is the runoff more in one section? Because I'm familiar with flat roofs, sometimes you just have them pour off one area of the flat roof versus?
Certainly.
Would you like me to say?
Sure, yeah. The microphone's the important part.
Oh, sorry. You're saying, yes, I can say?
Yeah, the point, because there's a video also, so maybe that...
You can sit wherever, just have the microphone.
So Connor hasn't been on the roof. I've been on a roof many, many times. And we've, over the last eight years, I've worked with a tenant to create a number of crickets. Crickets are plastic devices that have water heading to the drains, the roof drains. So I, while there may be some water that runs off the top, I really doubt there's a lot of volume that runs off the top, because we've really worked to have the roof clear of water within 24, 48 hours after a storm. So it really is pretty efficient right now heading to roof drains.
I just noted that there's a lot of wetlands in that particular area, so I didn't know if it could cause flooding in that area, or?
No. Again, I believe, when I've been there in storms, I don't see water flying over the edge.
Okay.
This is, it's really quite contained on the roof.
Yes, okay.
What's the actual height once the improvements made?
It's 20 feet and a couple of inches to the top section, what I call the chimney. It's a metal-clad architectural feature. It's 20 feet.
Okay.
And I think it's 18 for the other section. So if you see that number 80 there, that section is, I think, 26 inches, and then further down, it's probably 18 or so.
Okay.
Just to try to bring some interest...
It's a beautiful building, and the landscaping is beautiful.
That's nice.
Thank you. We've worked very hard with KLA TenCor to keep up the property even though there were only 14 people working at the building since 2010.
Looks nice. Just though, for clarification, there was two separate documents that gave different parking spaces. One said 263, one said 259, I think? Do you know?
If there are differences, I asked the tenant to restripe the spaces.
Okay.
So if they restripe the spaces and they missed a couple, that may be the discrepancy. It's somewhere in that range.
The nine handicap spaces?
Yeah, they have, it has been recently restripped.
Okay.
KLA repaved two-thirds of the parking lot in the last year, no, actually, last three years.
Abby, do you have any comments, or how close is the lighting, the existing lighting, to what we would currently approve for a new building? Is it from 1974?
There isn't. I mean, I haven't noticed too much lighting on the building. I mean, when I've gone out, it's been during the day, so I haven't seen the night lighting.
All right.
May I comment?
Absolutely.
The building's surrounded by woods, and there's 100 feet of woods that separate our property's parking lot from the Willard Circle houses. There's also Algonquin Gas to our south and the railroad to our west. There's, so I know that the intent of the new regulations in the zoning code are to prevent residential neighborhoods from getting a lot of light, and I know there was a controversy about the Rosenberg properties, the prime automobile properties, about how much light would come from their parking lot. The lighting that exists currently, we haven't received any complaints from the Willard Circle people in the last nine years about our lighting. So while we may not conform exactly to the current code, it's not intrusive lighting or else. You would have heard about it, I would have heard about it, but it is, the lighting hasn't changed, at least since 2010, when we purchased the property.
And I don't, except if I just add to that, it's on the building, right? I don't think there's any light poles in the parking lot.
There are light poles in the parking lot. There are, but they shine towards the parking lot. On the, there are, I believe, three or, three or four that are along the parking lot edge outside of the woods. So if you can picture the long expanse, if this long expanse here, there are some parking lights here that, again, are shining on the parking lot.
Abby, without going back to the lighting plan, is it possible to put in a condition for, I know we talk about, and I agree with you, there are a lot of trees in there now, but now they're all leafed out, but if there's, in the wintertime when they fall, like, you know, we've done that with other properties where the trees grow high and then there is space in the bottom, in case there becomes an issue if we are going to waive this.
Right. I had prepared a draft condition that says all non-security lights shall be turned off an hour after the close of business. Any new lighting to be installed shall meet the current requirements of Section 6.4 for exterior lighting of the zoning by law and submitted to the town planner for review and approval in advance of installation.
And when it's close of business?
Excuse me? We don't have a tenant.
Yeah. Is there any expected, because that's sort of open-ended?
I should also mention that there's significant, that's a photo, I believe, in the fall, and you can see a very long line of green. There are a lot of evergreens in that woods.
And getting back to my question again, is there any other condition that you can add without going back to look at the lighting plan, the current lighting plan?
We didn't have any past lighting plans on file, so it's just whatever is out there.
So you're not going to propose any changes unless a new tenant says, "We'd like to improve this," or to alter what we have? And then you'll come back to us?
Correct.
And we'll do, figure out what works.
Correct.
So you're good with that condition, basically, like, if you want to change the lighting or if there's a new use proposed, then you would come back for a?
Well, we would have to, if we were changing the lighting, we'd have to comply with the zoning code.
This waiver is just to get moving on the facade.
All we're trying to do is get a building permit and fill this.
And how, the roof recharge system, so is that, are you saying that you're going to, you're going to do that anyway now because of?
I don't know if it's in any way. We're going to do it because you guys are asking us to.
Yeah. Just want to make clear, like, that's, so we, it's, right now, the roof is draining into a single pipe, and that's, you think?
It's going into Southbrook.
So we constructed this thing here to avoid the flooding, well?
Well, it's not flooding, Southbrook, I haven't seen a Southbrook go above its banks.
It's not likely to do a whole lot for flooding. It's recharging right beside the river, which is where it's going to go anyway. What it will do is treat the stormwater, remove phosphorus, which is a concern for the town. I saw in our report earlier that, this is a bit off-topic, but it's about this address.
In '16 and in '18, there was discussion about the sidewalk being completed to East Street. Can you comment on that?
So may I address that? So when you own a property that you know is going to be vacated at the end of the term of the tenant, you'll do whatever you possibly can to come up with ideas to market the property to tenants. So VHB, with my instigation, came up with the notion of building a sidewalk. And that sidewalk would run from the parking lot to East Street, and we've received approvals from the planning board in 2016 and from the Conservation Commission, I think, in 2015, because there is a wetland adjacent to it. And we've worked with one of the neighbors extensively, the neighbor on East Street, to put a fence up at their property, and we're required by the planning board or by Abby's requirements to put additional fences along the Willard Street, Willard Circle neighborhood, the backyards of those neighbors. But this is only a marketing tool right now. So we have this board in our marketing suite at the building, and if a tenant wants to have a sidewalk, we'll build a sidewalk. If a tenant doesn't want to build a sidewalk because of security concerns that they might have, we don't, we wouldn't want to build the sidewalk, because then the tenant wouldn't come to the building. So people have been attracted to the building, and we've had many tours, and we have many conversations going on right now. So the good news is we're talking to people. The bad news is we don't have a signed lease. But in that, in those conversations, we've had people, I'll just give you an example of a tenant that's gone elsewhere. Eversource was looking at this property as a kind of worst-case scenario bunker. They'd put their backup systems at the property, and they didn't want anyone to come through the property, definitely did not want to have a sidewalk. And we've had other tenants that say, "You know, sidewalk sounds like a good idea, but, you know, we really like to control our space more, and we like the fact that it's entirely wooded around the property. So I can't, with, I don't think you'd want me to promise you to build a sidewalk, and then I'd lose a tenant because of that. So I'd like to keep that open as a, as something that I can take off the table, because if a tenant says no sidewalk, I don't want to have to say, gee, but the planning board requires me to have a sidewalk." That would be not a great marketing tool.
Abby, did the Conservation Commission provide any notification about going out there? Because there's a lot of water, and, I don't know if there's any water pools or?
They did review the project. I think it was in 2015 or 2016, so they did have a hearing on it back then. I think it was a hearing and approval.
Can it be a condition for them to go back out and look at it again before, if this were to actually go into action?
How long is the approval good for?
They, I think, three years, and then when a project's complete, they review it. Certificate of Compliance is what they review at the end to close out their approval.
Because they may need to write check it. It's, I think, I don't know how wet it was when they were out there, but it is. It's very wet back there.
Excuse me, we just had the reissuance of the Conservation Commission approval. We went through both the administrative approval from Abby, as well as the Conservation Commission provided us with a new three-year time period.
And that was in '18? Is that what I saw?
Yes, 2018.
So it's good till '21? You don't need to go back to Conservation?
Correct.
We did flag and walk this with the Conservation Commission.
Okay. And the sidewalk is on high ground. There is a ridge that runs through this property.
Is there lighting along the sidewalk?
So we would, we've worked extensively with Abby and with lighting consultants and with VHB to provide lighting that would be at a height of 12 feet. We have, is it called isometrics or light?
Photometrics.
Photometrics, thank you. Photometric plans that we presented to Abby that show exactly where the lights would shine. That's part of the reason to have the fences that have been required. Mrs. Chan's property on East Street, we've, at the East Street end, we provide lighting with bollards that are no more than four feet high. So, again, working with Abby's office, we've been very sensitive to making sure that no light is shining on the neighbors.
So that doesn't require a lighting plan? It just goes through you? Is that right? So what's being said?
Right. Well, I reviewed a lighting plan at that time for the sidewalk lights. So I think it was a few pole lights, and then, as Michael mentioned, the bollard light fixtures where it got closer to the East Street property.
Okay. And does the police give any input on this at all, or no?
May I?
In terms of security and?
May I comment? We've met with a lieutenant and a sergeant, and I'm sorry if I don't have their names right off of the top of my head, but there's a sergeant who's really into IT, your IT specialist, and we've talked about having two locations that have blue lights, that are security boxes, basically, call boxes, and on a verbal basis, the police have agreed to monitor on a 24/7 basis the sidewalk, because we will be providing, we'll be spending about 50, if we do the sidewalk, we have a budget of $50,000 that will be not associated with the lighting, but it was video surveillance. So each light pole will have video cameras, 180-degree light, video cameras, as well as different security systems that will be, that are, we hired a company called Safer Places that provided us with advice and all the different monitoring, and that if we build this sidewalk, that $50,000 will be installed in the building.
So it sounds like, so you have, basically, you have an option? Like, you have the plans, it's well-thought-out, it's secure, but you're waiting for a potential tenant, because it would be up to, it's only valuable to you if you can increase the marketability of the property.
Right, well, it's only valuable to me if a tenant says, "Yeah, we want that."
Right.
If a tenant doesn't want that, then it's a zero value to me. Do I really want to spend the $200,000 to build the sidewalk? You know, it's a great feature, you know, to get people off the street, to allow people to walk to Islington Village, as well as the T Station. To me, that sounds like a real win for everybody, but if a tenant doesn't want it, I'm not building it.
It sounds, it sounds great to me, too. Just I wish, I wonder if, and this is probably up to the tenant, right, but that location is a great potential place for overflow parking at Morrison Field, like, if there were a baseball game or a big, a lot of people, maybe Westwood residents, if they were able to park here and then walk down that sidewalk, it would be very convenient, but I'm guessing that you're going to say that's up to the tenant, too?
Well, it's up, it's clearly up to the tenant, even if they want the sidewalk, but let's say this tenant has a 24/7 operation. They're not going to want to have the ball field traffic coming through their property. And I don't know, you know, right now, we have all the car dealerships zooming through our property, doing wheelies. I mean, if you come to the property, you'll see all these different tire marks, of people testing out their cars. So it's not exactly the desire of any landlord to invite people to come abuse your property. And on a, my daughter has me watching Friday Night Lights right now, and so on Friday night, baseball games, I don't know if it's anything like the fictional town in Texas, but the behavior of people coming out of a ballgame, if there's nobody there monitoring the parking lot while the crowds are coming from ballgames, I'd want to have a discussion with the town on how that's going to happen. How are people from the town going to use our parking lot without anybody supervising their use?
Probably the same way they use the other parking lots of the other businesses in Islington, but?
Okay. It's a little different, because it's isolated, is the way I see it.
Are there any other questions, or should we go through the waivers to see if, off the board, other?
I have a question for Abby. This is an environmental technical design, so do they live with the conditions that are set forth in the bylaw that include, what is it, Section 715 there about the times and things like that? Or is it specifically these?
Which time?
So it says that area limits of work, method of import, type of location, if temporary. Do those have to all be included in there?
If it's required, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the zoning by law, but I, as a, I mean, in your decision as a condition, but we usually recommend, you know, having your requirements outlined so that anyone working on the project knows what they are. Let me just, 715?
7-2, page 7-2.
Is that the earth movement? Section 71?
It might not apply to this, but I was curious to see if that's something we need to include.
Which one were you talking about?
I don't have the whole book with me, I just have one section.
So Section 7.1.
Is that the rules and regulations, or is that the zoning by law?
This is special regulations.
They're just saying that we just need to find that these conditions are either?
Do we have to put those in there as a condition?
No, you don't, you don't have to put anything you don't want to, but if you have something, you know, special conditions, we usually put them in the decision.
It didn't seem like a lot of this applied to what they're doing, which is why I was asking, like, just to cover all the bases and make sure that it was being done policy-wise.
Hey, from this one, is that, is that the earth movement section?
No, this is EIDR, Section 7.1.
Those are the rules and regulations, I think. Not, I don't have a copy of that.
Oh, yeah, this is EMM. So that's not what we're doing here.
So then that doesn't have EMM?
No, earth material movement doesn't, but I think those are the rules and regulations, not separate from your zoning by law, but if you have a specific comment that, you know, something from there that you want to add in here, but yes, they may not all be relevant. I don't think those section numbers line up, which is... I don't think those section numbers line up, which is why I do want to get back to updating our rules and regulations so those section numbers match up with their zoning bylaw. So that's why the numbers are a little bit off from the zoning bylaw.
Is that okay, Deb?
And, and I know that Bay Head said that they were okay waiting to do the recharging until a tenant came in, but, I mean, the roof, they're going to do the work, so I don't know how everyone else feels about that, having it done now versus waiting.
Right. So that was my suggestion or, you know, after talking with the owner and reviewing with Phil, we would recommend submitting the design, drainage design for review and then having them construct it when they have a tenant. So right now, they don't have a tenant.
We don't know, for instance, in the location that the, that Connor has suggested.
Right.
It could be a tenant has other plans for that location. Maybe they want to add on to the building in that particular location. That's where the loading docks are. So to build something before exactly knowing how a tenant is going to use the property may be counterproductive.
The actual improvement here is being mitigated by, by a drywall. So the work we are doing is being brought to a stormwater standard right there. This would be an additional improvement.
But I guess, but the roof doesn't change, like, I mean, and it rains whether there's a tenant there or not, right? So it's...
I guess, to expand on Michael's point, this system could be here, the same system could be here, could be here, and that may be dictated by the tenant.
But that could always change, though, depending upon the tenant, right?
I guess it would be first come, first served, right? The tenant that's 20 years down the road, I don't know how long a lease is. At that point, the system's installed.
It seems reasonable to me to hold off on the construction. I don't know, I personally, I don't have a problem with it. You don't have any money coming in for this property, so to expend all that money to do this where you might handcuff yourself from getting a tenant, I don't have a problem with it, as long as you understand we would like to see it done.
Understood. We're not shy about spending money. The front facade will cost over $300,000.
You're dangling the carrot for the tenant. I get that.
But, but, no, but the notion of, again, building something that may not be in the right place, again, we're more than happy to do it when it's appropriate, the appropriate time is.
Completely reasonable, I believe.
Is that, is that written? So once a new tenant, then it goes in?
The way I wrote as a draft condition was the stormwater roof runoff recharging system shall be completed within 30 days of the final occupancy permit for when you have the first tenant or a tenant.
That seems reasonable to me.
Even if you break it up into fourths, if you get one tenant, we'd like to see the recharge system.
Totally understood.
Okay.
Deb, any, any other?
So in terms of a condition, could we have the, that report from the police department saying that they're going to do the security?
I don't have, again, I can find the names of the officers that visited the property. We've only received a verbal commitment from them that, I haven't asked for anything in writing and they haven't offered anything.
I don't know if they would give that.
For security?
I don't think so.
That's also, it's, it's very hypothetical.
Yeah, that's down the line.
I think if you had the tenant come in, then we'd need to, you know, it'd be time to do the roof system. And if the tenant wanted the sidewalk and everything, he'd probably be coming back for their modifications to that and to, you know, we could probably review that.
And we're all okay with all the waivers?
Yes. Why don't we go over each waiver? So the, this is the printed, printed out. So the update, so we have the, so it's, waiver is the stamped site plan dated May 30th, 2019, provided on June 10th. Edition now shown. Number one, submission requirement from providing a traffic study, section 7373. Number two, submission requirement from providing exterior lighting plans, section 7372. Number three, submission of existing and proposed drainage report. This is, this will change, though, right? Because of the drainage report.
Well, it's a, I guess, a partial waiver. They've, they haven't provided the full drainage calculations at this time, but they've committed to providing some stormwater recharge system later.
And number four, present, a presentation model. So that covers the four waivers. So do we need to make a, is it a vote on? Do we?
Yes, you should vote on the waivers.
So can we make a motion? Just do we have to read them all again or just as discussed by Brian?
Yeah. I don't think you need to repeat them again.
Yeah, I read it word for word, too.
Okay. So I make a motion to waive the, waive it submitted by and read by Brian.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So the waivers required passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And then the...
Should we review these draft?
Probably should.
Yeah.
Deb, do you want to read from those? So...
Yes, one sec.
Yes, so the, the nine conditions?
Yep. I suggested nine. I think you'll want to talk about number six as the, as the one you, we haven't, or that you talked about a little bit earlier about the sidewalk. Do you want me to summarize them?
Sure. And do you have that to throw up on the screen?
Oh.
Or do you?
Oh, uh, I do.
She has the screen. Okay. Just in case they wanted to...
What, the conditions, you mean?
Yeah, sometimes it's helpful. So Abby, you can continue.
Okay. Hold on, let me just... Okay. How do I make it show one page? All right. Okay. Where's my?
I'm not sure if you asked for public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. So I'd like to move to public comment. So are there any, any members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none?
Okay.
May continue.
Okay. All right. All right. The first condition that I suggested was for the owner to submit the final drainage design plans for the roof system details to the town engineer and town planner for a final review and approval. Number two is the stormwater runoff recharge system shall be completed within 30 days of a final occupancy permit for the first tenant. Number three was the soil test data shall be performed prior to construction and inspected by the town, town engineer or beta group. Number four was that the owner or contractor working on installing the drainage should contact the public works department at least 48 hours in advance to be present during the inspection of the installation and backfill of the system. Condition number five is requiring the applicant to install a bike rack. We haven't talked about that yet. That's a common condition that you've been imposing. The bike rack type should be located in accord, the type shall be in accordance with your bike parking standards. Number six, I had suggested about installing the sidewalk and the screening. It sounds like that's open for discussion by this...
Right. So number, number six, it sounds like we were, it comes down to the, the new tenant, essentially.
I think it should be eliminated for this.
Abby, what is the, what would the basis be for the board to have that requirement? Because clearly that would be a, you know, a $300,000 expense.
Are you just speaking of item number six?
Yes.
So I think we're going to, this will come out.
Is there some basis for that in terms of like the town, the, you know, the bylaws requirements for any project to be for the...
We, I mean, the EIDR approval is good for two years. So that's why it was first approved by me administratively in 2016. And then when that was coming to an end, they did come back again in 2018 that I approved again to allow that for another two years. So that's kind of a two-year timeframe. So if two years goes by, they would have to come back for that. I mean, usually we would say all site work to be completed prior to occupancy is, is a common one, I would say.
You could add a condition to the condition that if, if the sidewalk is installed. Because if we, if we don't have that, then it's...
Yeah. Or, I mean, you could take it out if you didn't want to require them to do the sidewalk. They have a separate approval for the sidewalk.
Does it separate?
Yes, they have.
This is, this is requiring that they build the sidewalk.
Yes. That was...
That seems counter to what we're...
But does the other approval, does it include the screening?
Yes. The other approval included the requirements for the landscaping and fence screening and the height of the lights.
So they have to follow those?
Yes. That still stands on its own.
Conditions.
So I'm okay with this being removed.
Number seven was requiring a certified ASBIL plan. Eight was if there was an exterior dumpster needed, that, that should be enclosed to the Board of Health standards and no, no chain link. And then the last condition, number nine, was to turn off any non-security lighting after hours. And if any lighting was going to be replaced, any new lighting shall comply and be submitted to me for a review.
I don't have any other comments with just removing number six.
I could just make a comment on number seven.
Okay.
Seems to be two different situations. We provide you with the certified ASBIL for the...
Oh, the sidewalk.
Oh, yes.
It needs to be amended.
Addition, maybe when we finish the sidewalk, if we finish the sidewalk, we file you the ASBIL.
Okay.
So remove the sidewalk fencing.
Yes.
Aspect of condition seven.
Okay. So I'll take off that last part of seven.
Hate to see that.
And so just to be, to be clear, Abby, so is it, is it ever, all the words after ASBIL plan?
I could take out all this?
Showing the proposed addition.
Showing the position, yeah.
Showing the full site work and final work.
Okay.
So just remove sidewalk and fencing?
Yeah, so the blue is showing.
And then, uh...
So I think we're ready for a motion if...
So I make a motion to approve the application with the, with the conditions as presented by Abby. Can I present it like that?
Yep.
The eight conditions with the removal of the sidewalk information.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion passes four, four to, I mean, five to nothing.
$2,000?
Thank you.
Good luck.
And do we need a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion to close the hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To close the hearing. Thank you. So next on the agenda, number two is 11 Stone Meadow Drive. Yep, it's an A&R approval, not required, plan to create two lots from the existing 4.33 acre parcel in the SRC zoning district. And Abby, is there, and are we expecting an applicant for this or no?
No, I don't think so. So this is a single, it's currently a vacant lot. So they've submitted an A&R plan to create two lots.
That's the next one.
What is the lot size requirement for SRC?
$40,000, sorry, Pete.
Just under an acre?
Yes.
And this is 115 and 87. Two or three acres.
So they both have the frontage, there's one lot here with the minimum, was it 125 frontage? And then here, it's the front, goes around this corner here. So they both have frontage on Stone Meadow Drive.
Okay. And Abby, do you have any, any comments from the staff with this?
No, I didn't have any concerns with this.
I noticed it says under lot 3B, it says parcel C combined. Where's parcel C? And I noticed there was a discrepancy in square footage, about 10,000 feet.
I think it was...
From what you sent us and what this is showing. You see under, where it says lot 3B? Read the, parenthetically.
Oh, unregistered parcel C.
And the other plans that you sent us indicated it was 77,000. I was wondering if that addition of C, which I don't know where C is on that, if that is why there's a 10,000 square feet. It really is immaterial, really. I'm just, it was a curia, curious read of the...
I know some of this land is in the unregistered land, so I know they have the different parcel numbers when it goes to the land court.
Yeah, that's what it came up in. The land court version is different.
Yes, oh, yes, that's what it is, the land court version, right.
I just wondered if you knew why. But it really doesn't matter to the A&R.
Any questions from Deb? Dave?
Nope.
Bill, do you have any questions?
No.
So do we need a motion for this?
Yes. You should motion to endorse the A&R.
Make motion to endorse the A&R.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
You can sign it afterwards if you want. And then the next one is, this is the 45 Collaboratory Street lot, the former lodge, the special permit that you approved in April. So this is actually creating the eight lots, which is the single family lots around the perimeter. So there is the two on Collaboratory Street. Lot one was the one with the group home. Two, three, four, five, and six on Winter Street, the single family lots. And then the seventh lot was the open space lot where the 40 residences are in the new road. And then lot eight is the town, the field lot that will go to the town. So this is creating those lots, consistent with what you approved in your special permit. But these are essentially the A&R lots that they have their frontage along Collaboratory and Winter Streets.
So the, the one in the middle, the, the number seven lot?
Mm-hmm.
That's not an A&R, though, right? That's part of the OS open space?
That is...
Isn't that the one with the 40 houses on it?
Actually, they have created it so that they have this, the frontage, they still have frontage here out on Collaboratory Street. And then this is where the road comes in. So the, this is their frontage and then they have their private road going through the...
And that works with the shape factor and everything, like, I mean, it's, it's been approved already pretty much, so it's, but it's...
It's interesting they have a shape factor of 42 in lot two, which is just a rectangle, a shape factor of 44. Just, I don't know. I forget how the math works on that, but...
It's pretty lenient.
Are there any questions from the board? Deb, Dave, Bill, Chris?
No.
Do we need public comment for this or no? Okay. So I guess we're all set for a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A&R for 40,000. I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for 45 Clapper Tree.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second it?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So we have the passes five to zero. Okay, moving down on the agenda, so we have other business and administrative items. So first on the list is the comprehensive plan.
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to give an update and I know Jack Wigan is here, the Chair of the Comprehensive Plans Steering Committee. Since we last met, I know Brian and Dave were there. But we had the vision session on May 18th. We had, I think, 61, and Jessica, sorry, Jessica was there. So we met at Thurston, we had about 60 people come out. We had a, you know, overview and presentation of what we've done since the 2000 plan. And then we broke up into small groups. There were, I think, eight tables. So we've, so the notes from each table have gone back to the consultants, the consultant. Jack and I are meeting with the consultant tomorrow, Thursday afternoon to review their summary report from the meeting and a draft vision statement that came out of the meeting. So they're working on that and we'll meet with them. So the next steps, we'll be, I'll be working closely with the committee members. And the committee members are going to be taking the information that they have so far gathered from the vision session and the recent survey. They're going to be continuing with their outreach and their stakeholder interviews. And the goal would be for them to continue over the next couple of months and compile the information together so that they can update their section of the plan. So I'll also be...
What is the timeline that they're looking at?
I'm thinking, I think the summer is a good time. So I'm suggesting we really work on this over the summer.
Like are they shooting for fall town meeting or spring town?
No. We don't have to go to town meeting anymore. I think we, did we talk about, well, when, when we brought the open space plan forward in the spring, we, it only went to you. So really, so the way I was thinking of it would be that the committee will be working over the summer and then, you know, work with you and then probably come to the planning board to start presenting sections probably in the fall. And so the plan ultimately has to be adopted by you, but it doesn't have to go to town meeting. So that's, I guess, up to you and the committee if you really want to take it to town meeting. You know, the, when we brought the open space plan to town meeting, there, there was some confusion as why it was going to town meeting for endorsement. But the planning board really has to, are the ones that have to approve the comprehensive plan. So I was, I was thinking it'd be in the fall time. They should be using this time now to work on their individual sections.
I think, I think we want to take the plan to town meeting. I think the problem that we had with the open space plan was that FinCom didn't feel that they were the appropriate board to consider it. And maybe the solution would be to find a way to bring these things directly to town meeting instead of to FinCom.
Right, we did, and we looked back at what we had done back in 2000. And that's when the Finance and War Commission was set up a little bit differently at that time. And I believe it was a resolution at town meeting. It was kind of a brief presentation at the start of town meeting. So it was presented to town meeting, but it didn't go through the Finance and War Commission.
Right, since there's no money, I mean, there's no, we're not asking for any money to be authorized. We're asking, the whole point was to get, to have town meeting say that they agree with it or, you know, or not agree with it. But, you know, have a resolution of whether this is something that's supported by the entire town. And I think we got caught up in the, in the procedure of FinCom recommending and everything. So if there's a way to do this as a resolution, I think we want the plan to go to town meeting. We shouldn't bypass town meeting for something as important as this.
I think with the open space, FinCom seemed to have a problem. The open space seemed to be presented, as they interpreted it, is these are action items. And the action items required money. And so I think there was a disconnect as to what the intent of the open space plan was and how the FinCom was interpreting it. And FinCom was reticent to say, yes, we endorse this. Because then they said, the town could interpret this as us saying, yeah, go spend the money. So I think if we want to do it, we need to make sure what we present to town meeting, if that's where we go, it's not, we need to go spend money on this. It's more of, this is where, the direction we'd like to see the town go. So I think that was, there was a disconnect in how we presented it to FinCom and how they interpreted our intentions. So I think your overall point is accurate. It was the expenditure of money that seemed to be the breakdown in communication. So I think we're just going forward. When we write this and present it, it has to be, you have to keep that in the back of your mind. How are people hearing our message?
And then I was, it was put together, but who from the planning board is on this committee?
No, no one on the planning board is a member of the committee.
Should be.
You've been as on liaisons.
Certain parts.
So the committee members...
Appointed committees?
Um, yes.
One of the examples is that, and the comprehensive planning committee, which is the steering committee?
Yep.
Should have a member of the planning board, a voting member of the planning board. Conservation commission, do we have someone from the conservation commission?
No, I mean, we have, yes, actually, we do.
Attorney.
Board of Health?
We opened it...
Housing authority.
When the planning board had talked about this process in the fall, late last summer or the fall last year, you opened it up to everyone. It wasn't just our individual representatives.
So what are you, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to the appointed committee handbook that the town puts out. And one of the examples of all the committees is particularly the comprehensive planning committee. And it should have these individuals on that committee, people from each, but, you know. So we, if we don't have that, then we're...
We don't, and I believe that door is closed for someone to be pointed by the select board on too. We purposely made, we made a conscious effort to say, we don't, we don't want to be on this committee helping write this. We want to make sure this is written so it can be endorsed by the, by the planning board. We didn't want one person by the planning board on the committee.
Well, two things, number one, we are not going by our general rules, number one, for the town. Number two is, we don't have anybody from these commissions on the committee and they should be according to our rules.
Well, we left that up to our select board to appoint the members of the steering committee.
But again, that's not what they should have done. So I'm not sure if this committee is...
Well, there is, it is, there's no one way to do this. The planning board is the approving authority for the comprehensive plan. So there's different approaches that...
Yes, at the end, I'm just saying for the, for the steering committee, this is how it's set up to be done.
Well, that's how it was said at one point, but this is just a guide.
I'm just referring to, I don't make the rules, I'm just...
Right, it's not a rule. But the planning board members are going to act as liaisons to these individual groups. We have two people assigned to each of the planned sections. So they're really getting, working on that now. So I expect going forward over the upcoming months, you'll be more engaged with them as they are taking in information and preparing.
Yeah, so how do we, how do we know when, because we wanted these meetings to be known so that we can attend. It's understood that we're, we're each identified as liaisons to each of the group. We are the approving board of the comprehensive plan. So we need to be a part of the process. So how do we know when they're going to be meeting with, with different stakeholders? And who are they meeting with, things like that?
Exactly.
And thank you, thank you for taking on the roles.
The reason I'm here is Abby mentioned, and Steve Olunoff, who was here at your meeting in mid-May, alerted me that you had talked about this during that meeting. So I looked at the Westcat tape of the conversation and I saw the nature of what you were talking about, which is similar to what you're talking about this evening as well. So I wanted to come and assure you that what you were hoping to happen, and you've mentioned it again tonight, will happen. And that is, there's not much we can do about the steering committee at this point. This selectman appointed them back in, you know, November of 18, based on an open process of seeking resumes and letters of interest and stuff. And then they went through some process and selected the 18 people. So we, none of us really had much say over, over that. But in terms of the relationship between the steering committee and the planning board is what I want to, what I want to talk about. And I understand how a planning board might wonder why it's not being the entity that's writing the plan. And all communities go through the same conversation. Probably, there are two reasons why a town might choose to do a steering committee rather than the planning board. The first is, the planning board has a lot on its plate. And long-range planning is part of the planning board's responsibilities. But as you all well know, it's a very difficult thing to be able to do. So most towns, if not all towns, create a separate committee to run with it, working with, closely with the planning board. Some probably have planning board members on the committees, some don't. The second reason is that the plan is really more than what's within the jurisdiction of the planning board. Because it gets into things that a number of the other boards, committees, and organizations in town are responsible for. It might be public facilities, I mean, you guys touch upon most of these things. But housing is, or open space and recreation, or, or any number of things, sustainable development and that kind of thing. So the idea would be to try to broaden the participation in the development of the plan beyond any of the existing boards. But to try to draw upon the expertise that exists within the town. So I'd say that Westwood did it for probably both of those reasons. We did it this way in 2000. It was, I think, a slightly larger steering committee at the time. And it was drawn from a similar type of background of the people that we have now. So this, to get more to the point, so that's one thing. The second thing was that, how we were going to work with the planning board, that seemed to be a great concern with you. You, you mentioned that there is a planning board liaison that is to work with each of the seven or eight subcommittees that we've established for each section of the plan. Those subcommittees have been designated, we did that in our first meeting in November. And so there's a couple of people on most of those subcommittees from each, from the steering committee and a planning board liaison. Those, other than a few of those members doing some interviewing, Tom Beatty, for example, the former library director, has done a number of interviews with town departmental staff. And the reason he did that is because he knows most of the people from his 25 years or so of being the library director. So he, he got a jump on it. Going to guess that most people haven't gotten very far with that. What their assignment was up till this point was to help put together the survey that went on, that was distributed and, and then participate in the, in the visioning session. And to take the section from the 2000 plan and basically go through it. And to the extent that they're able to do that, to mark it up. You know, what's been done, what seems outmoded today, what issues aren't being reflected in that language, that's all. Because the thing that they really need to work with is the input that they, we receive through the survey and through the visioning session. That's sort of the direction that's going, that we all need to know in order to be able to do any kind of revision to the comprehensive plan. So we've just got that information. Abby mentioned we're meeting with a consultant on Thursday, at which point they're supposed to provide us with a draft of an overall vision statement and some draft preliminary goals for each one of the sections from, based on what they heard at that visioning session. At that point, we're going to need to come together as a steering committee and, and basically begin to work with that information along with data and analysis that Abby's going to have to do. Because what we need is, we need to update the data that's in that plan. What's the population change? What's the housing changes? You know, we've been developing affordable housing, senior housing, what's that look like today? In other words, we make recommendations about each of those things, but we've got to find out what the town wants to do in the future and then what the data is telling us. What have we done and do we need to keep doing more of it? Or, or can we put some of that to rest? So that's really the exercise. So my, my recommendation is that these two people who are from the steering committee on each one of these topic areas will work with their liaison and the planning board. So as they go to do the next step, which is to seriously dig into what those sections of the plan say, to do that in concert with their planning board liaison. Trying to keep the bulk of the work off your table, but for you to participate to the degree that you think you would like to do that. That will, that effort will result in a draft revised section of the plan. And Abby, as Abby mentioned before, will try to bring those drafts to the planning board in two or three at a time so that we don't overwhelm anybody. So that means one of you will know what's in that already. And then the others will have a chance to reflect on it at a meeting. But that, that's not, you're not going to be asked to look at and say, okay, this is how we're going to go. We'd, we'd still be looking for comments from the whole planning board at that point. Come back from that, try and revise it again. And it's sort of an iterative process at that point. Because not only do we have to get each section right, we have to get the sections interrelated. Because you do something here, it's going to affect what you do there. So that's a piece that'll come at the end. So my purpose here is just to assure you that I, we heard you and, and we'll make sure that that happens.
So how does somebody find out that? So for instance, I'm a liaison for, for a couple where I'd like to go in. So I can email those individuals directly. Because I would, some of it, Dave, you were mentioning before, where some of the items, it would be nice if it was public. We do have a steering committee, but it would be nice if public want to be, want to be participating in any of these. I think it might help with the visibility of this.
I agree.
To help it get endorsed by the town.
I think all we can do, you know, there'll be some work that needs to be done, that revision, that drafting. So that kind, we're thinking that the subcommittee would do that. But there's no reason why that draft couldn't be put online for anybody to look at it, they want it to. And then something, somehow alert the public that these sections are beginning to appear on the, on the webpage for the comprehensive plan. That would be one thing. And then when we bring it before the planning board, that'll be another chance for them to look at it. And we had this other idea that once we get our draft sections done, that the committee would do, we're not sure how this would work, but some sort of open house where rather than a two-hour period where you come and listen to us or give us your comments, we'll be there. If you're interested in what the plan says, you could come to any one of a number of tables and talk to the people about what's in there and what your thoughts are on it. I mean, the, the public participation piece of these planning processes are complicated. And, and you're always looking to increase it and improve it. You'll never get everybody, but you try to do as much, best you can. So if you have further thoughts on that as we go along and as you see this unfold...
Yeah, because Abby, you mentioned earlier in the process that you were going to help with scheduling. How has that happened?
Right, so, so far, I mean, all the committee members have been directed and, and I'll follow up with them again. If they're going to, if they're going to any public meetings. For example, they have gone to, Tom has gone to like the Board of Library trustees meetings and school committee meetings. They've been instructed to notify, well, the staff, support for those boards and commissions to get on an agenda and contact me so that they're posted. So on our comprehensive plan steering committee page, we do have a list of all meetings, public meetings and agendas. And then they also get posted and go on the town's meeting notifications. So again, everyone should always sign up for the meeting notification.
But we wouldn't know if they were at the meeting.
Right, oh, well, I've been, I would contact you. So I've contacted Debbie. I mean, the only public ones I've been so far have really been consultant aging, Board of Library, trustees, school committee. So I, when I found out about them, I let Debbie know because she's the facilities liaison.
But are you saying, but does that mean that those individuals from the steering committee are at that meeting that night? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, when they're going to be talking about it, right.
The reasons that you talked about, Brian, that's the best way for us to do it. Because then we're doing it in a public forum.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice.
There'll be certain cases where we'll want to talk to a departmental person or a nonprofit, for example, that wouldn't be at a public meeting. The committee member would just go and speak to that person. And, but we, there's no reason why you wouldn't be able to know that as well.
Yeah, I think it would be, and it would be really...
Yeah, I think it would be, and it would be really useful, like, like transportation. I'm sure there'll be time when you want to sit down and talk with Todd Corchen, for example. And if I were the, like Brian's a transportation liaison, it'd be really good for him to be in on that meeting to hear a lot of the details, you know. So, I would just, I would err on the side of inclusion, you know, on any of these things, unless it's just a straight interview with, with some staff about something. But I think it's, I think that's what we wanted, was just to, not to find out, oh, whoops, there was a meeting I missed. And that's the one where they figured everything out. I mean, that's kind of the theme of town government, is like, there was one meeting I missed, and that's the one where they decided to do all this stuff.
And then, and is it also possible, like, so the, the steering committee meetings themselves, I think we should be able to attend. So, do we know when those?
Right.
And I'll, even if it's just in attendance, not necessarily.
Right, right. So, I've been letting you know when they've happened. They haven't had too many, three maybe? No, November, so we've had three.
Have they videoed?
Yes, and they're all recorded by Westwood Media Center. So far, they've been held at the police station. So, yes, I will continue to let you know when they are. I've let you know when they are in the past, but when they hit, they meet as needed, so it's not a regular schedule. So, after, you know, probably on Thursday, we'll talk about our next steps of the committee of when they're going to meet, and we'll reiterate some of these things. So, I imagine this work is really just getting started now. We were, I mean, we all were pretty busy over the last few months, so I see this time, summer and fall, to really go forward with this. I don't think fall town meeting is realistic. I would, I think we need the fall, the series of, you know, the fall to come to the planning board and work on the various drafts. So, I think that process will continue through the end of the year.
I have a recommendation. We were talking about public engagement and the difficulties of, so, I know after doing the open space plan, it took hours to go through those documents. I don't know if there's a way that you can summarize it and maybe put the locations of where they are in there, so that the people who can just take a quick look at it, residents can, and then say, oh, I want to know a little bit more about this. And then they can go to that section. Doesn't have to include everything, but just the major, I don't know if that's possible to do.
Recommendations you're talking about?
I'm talking about when the, when you're doing the plan. And instead of having, they're not going to go through and read the entire plan. If you could summarize it somehow, and just sort of give them maybe the location of where they could find the additional information on a specific area, and that way they'll at least be informed, and they won't have to leave the, read the 600 or 700-page document.
How big was the open space plan? It was quite large.
It was large.
The open space.
But the comprehensive wasn't that big.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think this one, the way it's designed by section, the nine areas are, we probably will, as Jack mentioned, they'll probably come in, the drafts are available, you know, several pages at a time. So, I don't expect that we would have a whole document all one time. And so, we're thinking, then when they, when they're ready to come to you, the planning board meetings, it would focus on one or two sections, or possibly three, at a time. So, right now, the plan, I think, is about five section, five pages per section.
Okay.
So, it's broken down differently, and probably easier to review them at a time that way.
It's a reasonable comment, though, Devin. I think if, as we go through it and those drafts come up and you go, I'm not seeing this, it's still too confusing, then we'll try to, try to work something out. The end of the other plan, there was a table, it was a, that captured all of the recommendations in one place. One listed one right after the other, which is the piece that most people are interested in looking at. What does this recommend to do? And so, that table allowed somebody to go, to go down it. There was 150 recommendations or something like that. The consultant that we worked with in 2000 had a style of writing that was very concise, and he convinced us the best way to do a plan was to make it short and concise, because the, in fact, people don't read a 250-page plan. They may not read a 60-page plan either, but at least it's, you have a better shot at it. So, we'll, our plan is to stick with that.
Well, we have that template.
We have the template.
So, we don't have to deviate too far from it.
And the only reason we even think that we can do it this way is because we really are considering this a revision of the 2000 plan. So, we're not going to try to do major rewrites of background sections or anything like that, only to the extent that it's necessary to support a recommendation that's made.
Abby, are three of us allowed to go to one of these meetings? Are they advertised properly, or we have to?
Public, no.
Right. I suggest not more than two of you at a time. So, if there was three of you, I mean, you can attend, like, things like the vision session, but if.
No, I get that, but if I wanted to go to a land use, because I'm the liaison, and separately Deb decided she wanted to, and then Brian at the last second, oh, I wanted to go do that, we all of a sudden are in the same place at the same time, talking about planning board things. Is it, we're not talking about a hearing.
She should notify me so we post it.
Okay. So, we need to let you know?
Yes, coordinate, yeah.
What ones we're talking about going to?
So, all the committee members should be coordinating with me.
The presumption is, the liaison will attend his or her meetings.
Yeah.
And so, if you want in, if you want to be the second one in, you need to chime in.
Yeah.
And that's good for us, because we're the third member of our subcommittees, too. And think about it, two people is where we'll sit in.
And those would be public, so like the steering committee meetings, you could just generally advertise planning board to attend. So, that'll just cover if we do show up. And then for these individual subject areas, like you said, presumption is that the liaison goes, no problem. But if other people want to go, let Abby know, and then it's just making, because it should be a public meeting anyway, like unless it's going to be a one-on-one with staff, and, you know, if it's advertised, then the only issue when it's an advertised public meeting is that we want to say, planning board is also attending.
Yeah.
It's not, it doesn't change the requirements of the meeting, it's just that you need to be aware that a quorum of the planning board would be present at that meeting.
Yeah.
But the, it prevents the last-minute decision to go. You can't do that, because she wouldn't have had time, unless she advertises every time.
Well, if she was planning ahead of time.
Yeah, if you knew ahead of time. I mean, you can't attend other meetings, you just, you can't deliberate. But it's best practice if, if we suspected that three of, more than three of you were going to come to let me know, and I would get it posted at least 48 business hours in advance, and I would, as Dave mentioned, planning board to attend such and such meeting, to participate in discussion on.
The most important thing is letting us know that the meeting is happening, so that we can at least tell the liaison and then one other if they want to, or what have you.
So, like, for example, if the pedestrian bike committee were meeting and discussing the transportation section of the plan, the transportation liaison would, could go to that meeting, no problem. If somebody else from the planning board wanted to go, they should let you know, so you can just add on to the, on to the announcement for the ped bike committee that members of the planning board will be attending also. But in terms, so it's just things like, there's probably already an existing public meeting happening, but it would just be to add to that, to say, members of the planning board will be attending.
Yeah.
Someone who's not the liaison wants to attend, they just need to flag that in, you know, what, like 48 hours in advance or something, so you can get the.
Yes, yeah. So, I've been trying to make sure that any meetings that happen, get posted, open meeting loss, individual one, get posted in advance. I'll let you know, and then I can, I can expand on those notices.
And Abby, do you have a pulse on which, which subcommittee, which grouping is further along than others? Do they let you know that? Or Jackie, are they?
I would say, well, the.
Some people say they're further along.
The open space and recreation plan, they at least have a good amount of information, since we've recently updated the plan. Also, the group working on the housing plan.
Yeah, I was just curious, as we move along, are you, are you going to have a thumb on the pulse, or is that?
Yes, I, yes. We work in closely with them, and you know.
Right.
Early, yeah. I'd say, I think the facility section's probably done the most interviews, because there's so many different municipal facilities in town. So, they've done the most individual staff and various board interviews. So, that's probably the furthest along in terms of new sections.
Okay, any other questions? I don't have anymore.
Mm-mm.
Jack, thank you very much for attending. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
So, next on the agenda under other business and administrative items is the review of upcoming zoning board of appeal applications. So, we, I believe we have two.
Right, there are two applications. I prepared a draft memo yesterday. I didn't have too many comments. I just reiterated the section of the bylaw. I think one was a special permit for an addition within the, within the setback. And the other one was, let me see. If you have anything else to add on, on this draft. And the second one, oh, yeah, the second one was a variance. So, it would be increase in nonconformity for building coverage and front and rear setbacks. So, my recommendation was that the planning board needs to consider the specific relief and really look at the district as a whole. And so, that applicant should present hardship, because variance is actually supposed to be very hard to get. So, that ownership is on the applicant to present that, and the zoning board has to make those clear findings.
So, well, it won't come before us, though?
No. So, these, I just, I review zoning board applications before their meetings, and if I get them before your meetings, I let you know, so if you have any other further comments. But these are essentially comments, the same way we, you get comments from other boards and committees.
So, we make no decision on this?
No, no decision, it's just our comments to the zoning board.
Wasn't it a goal to not, not make the nonconforming lots more nonconforming?
Yes. That's why, well, and that's why Bailey Street is now a variance.
Ah.
So, they have to show a hardship.
Yes.
Variants should be difficult to get.
Yeah, so, I forgot this specifically, but I think if this was a couple of years ago, under the old bylaw, it would have been a special permit.
Special permit, yeah.
Rather than a variance. We made it stricter.
Do you mind, so what is, what is it about this particular addition? So, is it the setbacks here, so we have?
Yes. Is it, I think.
Looks like you're citing the building in addition to increase the nonconformity of the cut building coverage, impervious coverage, and then also it's expanding front and rear into the setbacks.
So, here it is here.
It's a trifecta.
This is, this is from there.
It's like the perfect storm.
I notice.
Okay. I don't know what their hardship is, but.
So, I, this is sort of related to this, but it's a separate, one of the things, I don't know if it came before you, there's a, the ZBA made a determination on an in-law and a garage around the corner from me, and it's huge. And I don't know if that came before something we looked at, because it looks like a separate house.
It did go the ZBA, I know that. They're all accessory apartments, do go the ZBA.
But it was, it was interesting, because the garage is here, and then the apartment's behind it. So, it goes the whole length of the yard. So, I didn't know if that was something that was, did we look at that, or?
We gave comments, or I gave comments.
Oh, okay.
I think I gave, I think I gave comments. I think they were probably along the lines of to review the full details, design criteria of 8.5. I know we looked at it, I don't remember much else. If I get it in time, I'll give it to you.
But there's a set of parameters. It can only be so many square feet.
Yes, yeah.
It can't violate setbacks.
Yes.
There has to be additional parking.
There's size requirements and design requirements.
Right.
And the lot does go long on that.
Yeah, so I think this maybe was, yeah, the garage was the long way, right? I think.
Yes. So, they pushed the envelope, it sounds like, but they didn't step over the line, otherwise the ZBA would have caught it.
Because, well, the accessory apartment wasn't, there was a garage, and then there was accessory part in, in the garage, right?
Behind it.
Oh, behind it?
Yeah, they built it behind it.
Yeah, so the garage, two-car garage to the left, and then it goes deep beyond it.
I didn't know, maybe it was variance, you know, maybe it was a hardship or something.
I think it was only a special permit. I believe it was only a special permit. I don't remember exactly. I, I do remember it went to the zoning board of appeals, and I do remember reviewing it at that time, but I don't remember the details of.
So, we can't really, I mean, we're not going to, I mean, tell them it's a variance, so you have to follow the rules. I mean, but that's kind of like, that they should know, that we're not going to tell them how to do their job, but.
15 Bailey Street, what are the setbacks? What are, what are the difference between the?
Just what on the plan.
So, actually, on one, on the plot plan, it lists what the nonconforming ones are right now, and how much more nonconforming they'll be.
Well, that's why I just wanted to.
Yeah, I don't have it pulled up.
I, I don't know, I didn't measure, I didn't measure it out.
I thought they did a nice job putting them in the, in the plan.
I think that was the other one, Hawthorne, right? I think it was Hawthorne did say, yeah, they needed relief of, I think it was like three and a half feet.
Okay.
I, I mean, in my neighborhood, you just have so many, I believe variances have been given, and, I mean, when you're talking, if you give it to one portion of the town, pretty much, I think you have to give it to everybody, but it's.
They have, well, variances are not given out very much.
Yeah. In the years past.
It's very rare, I don't.
They've given out special permits, which were much easier to obtain, but this board changed those rules back in 15 or 16.
Yeah.
To say, you got to stop doing that. And we're trying to preserve the integrity of those neighborhoods like Islington and the maze, and over by Buckmaster, because there were a lot of demolitions going on. And it was completely changing the complexion of the, of the neighborhood. So, that was our attempt through zoning to.
Right, so we have seen a reduction in the amount of application. So, we've seen people redesigning their plans to, to comply.
Yeah, they don't want to have to go for a variance.
Yeah.
Abby, one thing, could you, because I do like that this is added to the plan. It has the required, provided, and then whether it's, whether it conforms or not. Could we make a recommendation to the ZBA that, I don't know if they, if they make recommendations to applicants to have required, current, and then provided?
Yes, I do like that, yeah.
You made the light on one.
Oh, yeah, they do, okay, so I do have it, they, yeah, they do have required, oh, for the, they have required, provided, and then they have.
Yeah, the one was better.
Yeah.
It was well-written out.
I like when it says that, too. The relief, yeah.
It made the changes, it showed you what the, the nonconformity would be.
And that's what I was kind of getting at my comments, to have it clearly how much relief they were looking for. So, it's stated on there.
Any other comments for the ZBA applications?
Nope.
Next on the agenda, review of planning board best practices.
Yeah, so, we have done fully electronic. I have requested iPads, so hopefully we'll get those, those are in the works. But those would be ones that we would keep here, but have available and set up at the meetings. So, it would be shared between this board, conservation commission, zoning board, so that, so eventually, if we get those, we'll have them set up for the meetings. That way you can pull up the plans. But in the meantime, you can continue to do what you're doing now, using at-your-home computer or whatever. Also hoping to get another monitor, so that we can show the audience the same one.
That's a good idea.
Over there.
I just have one comment on the second bulleted one, and it's just a, on the, so second bullet where it says, on, on the most challenging items. I think it just needs a period there, and then capitalize A for administrative.
Wow.
That's it.
So, what I traditionally do, I try to do one meeting at a time when I send you your packets. There's been some comments that you don't think, some of you maybe don't think that you don't get information as early as you would like to. I mean, I get everything out to you as soon as you can, usually, it's usually about two weeks between a meeting.
So you, you upload as you go?
Yes.
Over the, the two weeks before?
So we have, public hearing items are due about one month prior to a meeting. Then it, it gets reviewed, processed, compiled, we do a mailing to all the abutters, abutting towns, the parties of interest. And then we post them on the website under our current planning board applications page and then also on the meeting calendar on, on the homepage. So for the meeting out, so for example, we have two public hearings on for June twenty-fifth.
And they're already there.
Those have been posted for about two weeks, I think, or May thirtieth, around that timeframe.
So that might be part of it too, is that you send out the, the link on the Friday with the link to the package, but there's already material there ahead of that time.
Right. Well, I usually send, I usually try to send you the actual application of the material earlier than that, but the Friday before is all, any new information, which is mostly staff, staff comments, staff reports, anything new we got in, like such as pictures, kind of background information. I try to always make sure it's on a Friday.
But you're still getting stuff the day of.
Yes, so, so, because I'll provide the material to you on Friday, then I'll have like my comments to the applicants. So a lot of times they'll use that time over the weekend to respond. So that's why we saw with your earlier application, they worked on some drainage designs over the weekend and provided that on Monday.
The challenge that I have is when, when there's a back and forth between, especially for a larger project, so there's a back and forth between the applicant and then one of our professional reviewers. So they have their exchange and then we get the update on Monday and the meeting's on Tuesday. So that's, that's where I find a time challenge with work and that. So that's the, that's where the time load is challenging for me, is leading up to that meeting to make a decision at that moment, I need to make sure I get through that.
So I usually try to, you know, send, we have one meeting and then the next meeting, I send out the application material. So if you can review anything earlier, I'd recommend reviewing those plans. I, I mean, do you want, so it's usually about, we'll start putting the next hearings up about three and a half or three, three to three and a half weeks out of a meeting. Do you want me to send you the material for that meeting then? The confusion in the past has sometimes been, you have, you have to remember which meetings are where and what's on what meeting. I mean, I would say it in the.
That email that you send out with the link is excellent. If you had that information ahead of time with that link to send in an email, I would like to receive that email.
But you're saying the issue is when you get it, twenty-four hours before tonight's meeting?
Two issues, one is that if you have, if you have that information ahead of time and you can send out the link, an email with the link to a future hearing, two weeks out or three weeks out, I'm okay with getting that because I can organize that myself. And secondly, like getting it on the Monday, that can be a challenge if it's a lot of reviewing material.
And that's, I think, you can't, you can't prevent them from responding to Beta's comments on Monday, but what you can say is, this is too late to be considered by the board. So as a result, they may not vote tomorrow night on this, depending on what this is, whatever they just sent. So that's really all you can do is say, because you're submitting this so late, and it's not even their fault sometimes, sometimes it takes Beta a while to get back to them for them to respond. So it's difficult to draw a line in the sand if we want to be a productive board and not keep pushing things out to the next meeting. Sometimes it's, what we're talking about is really immaterial to our decision making, but.
Well, you usually get, the applicant provides all of their material, usually, at least, you have it usually for about two weeks. But then if you, if you have any of those kind of continued ones.
You don't currently send out that email though, two weeks ahead though. I'm not missing in that email.
I usually wait till one meeting ends and then I send you the next one.
You'll send the next one, but this, the twenty-fifth, you sent like a week ago.
I sent the twenty-fifth a week ago. I normally would wait till after tonight though, because I don't want to confuse your workload of what.
That's okay, I'm, I'm actually okay with that.
Okay.
Does anyone else want it earlier?
I think getting it early is better for me, just trying to juggle everything and having the information that was good.
So from now on, we'll send the applications, material, the plans, their application when we get them. It's not too confusing right now, but when it's busier times when you might have more meetings, like in the spring, it might be like three meetings out because you might have, be attending other meetings.
Yes.
So when we get them posted on the website, I'll send that link to you as well. But usually I try, it's a, it's pretty hard to know new information from applicants that require extensive review. I usually say nothing after Friday. So if, if it's usually up until the meeting, it's usually applicants' responses or my recommendation based on the latest information or my suggested changes. So I try to have a hard, no new information after Friday.
I think you're, you're fine, but I, I agree with Chris is that the, it's the expectation of the applicant that if they submit information later, it may be such a volume that you're not able to vote on it that night.
An example though is tonight, the stormwater response didn't come till yesterday or today, right?
Yes, yesterday or late yesterday, it was like four o'clock yesterday.
We were able to listen to it and respond to it. So you can't say, we definitely, if you submitted on Monday, we're not gonna touch.
It was no hard and fast.
Because we might, because we did tonight. It depends on what you're submitting back to us. But just as a procedure for Abby to tell the applicant Friday, but we all know that's, that's not real. I mean, they're gonna have to respond or Beta was late in responding, so now they're late in turn responding. So it's, it's really difficult and it, you know, the only, one thing we can say is, we can't respond that fast and we're gonna have to push it out two more weeks at least or a month if the next meeting is full. We can't take, you know.
Yeah, certain items will take more review, more extensive review time.
Yeah, it just depends on what they're submitting late.
Okay, so I'll start, once we get them posted to the website, we'll get you those out.
Just for me personally, what is helpful, and I can't remember how it appears, but in the subject line, if you just put the date and meeting packet, then I can, all right visually, I don't have to deal with that, that's for two weeks, I'm gonna deal with the more current one now, just so I don't have to go through.
Yep.
You might do it already, I can't remember how.
And then always use that link, because anytime something new comes in, when I up, when I update it, it's magically there. So you, you'll get that immediately.
One question regarding that, so when you upload an item to, let's say, you alphabetize it, so D.
Or automatically does it, yep.
Does it, if you replace that D, is it clear that it's replaced? I believe it does.
It changes the order, like actually this is an interesting thing, so if, so they're just, it just auto generates the letters. And actually, if you're looking at the public version of it, the letter will be missing for anything that is restricted, like the, like our notice, if you, if you log out of the website and look at a list of items, it'll be like A, B, C, D, F, G.
So they match.
D is one that has a little shield on it, it's like something.
Right, you have to be logged in to see it.
Right.
So it matches, it'd be worse if it didn't match.
Yeah, you're saying so.
Yeah, but they see a blank, so they see a blank if they don't have, logged in.
Right. They have to, but it's funny because the letter doesn't, it's like A, B.
It skips a letter, okay.
But if it's, if it's revised, then what happens? I think, I think you put revised.
I.
I just want to know.
Sometimes I can update the attachment if it's the exact same, if it's the same file, I can update it. But if it, it's not the same file, I have to, oh yeah, if it's, if it's a minor edit, for example, like my meeting summary, I just update, I write, update and I try to write the date. But if it's a new document, like that has substantial revisions, I will try to write in this, in the subject revised.
Revised site plan.
Yeah, revised site plan or something.
Okay. Any other comments regarding that? So next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for March twenty-fifth, April second, April twenty-third and May fourteenth. I reviewed them and I don't have any comments.
I actually have a comment. Jessica, these are excellent. I've been meaning to say it, seriously, a very concise, it's like, it's like I'm watching the video, seriously, very good minutes.
Thank you, Jessica, very helpful.
It is true, they, they're readable.
Yeah.
Did everybody get a chance to review?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes for the minutes.
Can I make a comment? Now, Bill wasn't here for three, for three twenty-five, four-two and four twenty-three, so he have to abstain from three twenty-five, four, so you have to do that separately?
He can approve May fourteenth.
Okay.
I don't know if we have to make them.
Do you have to make a motion separately? That's what I'm asking, sorry.
What if you just redo it with those two?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of three twenty-five, four-two and four twenty-three.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Stand? Motion passes.
I make a motion, we approve minutes from May fourteenth.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So upcoming meeting, so June twenty-fifth, so these are the same dates that we discussed.
Yeah, but I, I won't be here, so you need to decide if you wanna.
Right.
And I won't be able to call in, but I, I could review the video if that's the route we want to take.
Okay. I believe that that's the end of our meeting.
I have a question, just Abby to tell us, if there's a fall town meeting, I just saw that that might be November twelfth is kind of the date that's out there. So if there is a, if there's a November town meeting, when would we start up the, the ever so fun process of considering zoning changes and kind of picking up some of the things that were left off from last time?
Specifically the drug rehab facility.
Right.
We typically start that like in August.
Yeah, or July, July and August. Typically, we'd start in the summer. I do feel like I'm very busy and you with the comprehensive plan, so I don't want to overextend ourselves.
Can you add to the, to the meeting summary for next where you show the timeline of how many, how many meetings we have to have to discuss them so we can back ourselves into it so we don't run out of time?
So normally, I think the best approach would be probably in July, at your July, you have July twenty-third and August thirteenth where you should talk about zoning.
But that's already like, that's.
I know.
Two minutes.
Chair, I'd like to make a statement if I can.
Sure.
I'd like to make a statement. I speak for myself and no one else on the, on the board, but a few weeks ago, I was elected to the planning board by the residents of Westwood and I thank them for their opportunity to represent them. Also, a few weeks ago, I took a pledge that I would represent Westwood to the best of my ability. The charge of the planning board is a very important one and it reads in the town's charter as it's, that it shall be responsible for the general, physical, economic and environmental planning of the town under general laws, this charter and the bylaws. So to that end, I would like to work with everyone on this board, other boards and the administration to always do the best for Westwood. In order to do the best, I will need the support of the town administration and have communication, information from other boards when needed. I also believe to make the right decisions, one needs to get and investigate information. Because the town has gone paperless, I have asked that all members receive laptops, Abby addressed that a little earlier, but it's halfway there. In order that we can do the work we're elected to do and we should have official identification so we can comfortably inspect sites. I believe this is needed to be said, again, I'll work hard to do the best of my ability with all the planning board members and administration of Westwood. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Happy to have you here. So you bring up an interesting point, so, so ID, I went down to do a couple of site visits. Do we need to notify the, ahead of time, because sometimes you're going into a place, there was nobody there?
Well, when they sign, when they, applicants apply, they have to sign a little property owner authorization form and on that it says it authorizes planning board members and agents of the planning board, such as the planning board's review staff, to visit the site.
Does it give any times to the day?
No.
Because even if you show up with a business card, what does that mean? It's more meaningful than not having a card of some sort.
I mean, I could give you my business card to hand out. I mean, generally, I don't think you have, you have to talk to anyone, you just say you're a member of a planning board and you're preparing for an upcoming meeting and reviewing the site.
I would think it'd be more comfortable, I know for myself, if I just had something, I could show something, I'm an official or with the planning board, what have you, it can't be that expensive to make.
What are you thinking that I shouldn't make?
It could be as, as little as a plastic type card or something, you could, people put them in their windshields, but it, you know, whatever type, something that just, that you're on official business. The other day I was questioned at one site, it's just, it's more comfortable for the people at the site, myself, I mean, I could be Joe Schmo from Idaho, who knows?
So you know what we could do is we could leave that up to you, so for the next meeting, if you have any ideas.
I've asked Mike Gillett also.
Yeah, because even going up to the university site.
You should give you a hard hat.
You can't, you absolutely can't go on the site without a hard, yeah, it's a good point.
Yeah, I've thought about that actually, like I was out there, I was, I was measuring the curb from the new CVS building out to the street and I thought, oh, somebody's gonna do something here, but, and another time I rode my bike up to a property where we were talking about a shared driveway and I rode down their driveway on my bike and, you know, and somebody came out and like said, hey, what do you, I'm like, I'm with, I'm on the planning board. So I was comfortable doing that, but I, I don't think that, you know, if I was, I was a little nervous and so I think it is, it would be good to have some sort of a, a way to reassure people that, you know, we're on official business and not just some random person like out there.
Yeah, not your kind, something that says who each person is, so they can be identified, by.
See what other towns have done maybe like, yeah. It's a good point. Thank you, Bill. Anything else, public have anything? Okay, I think we're all set to make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye. To sign these.
Oh, yes.